Welcome to everyone to the District 5 Republican County Council Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP. My name is Erica McDonald, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County, and we're pleased to present this opportunity for the voters of Baltimore County to meet the candidates and hear what they have to say about important issues facing our county. The League and the NAACP are nonprofit, nonpartisan political organizations. Neither organization supports nor poses candidates for public office and both do not support political parties. The League's mission is to encourage informed and active participation in government, increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The NAACP seeks to assure that African-Americans as well as all citizens participate in our democracy as active and informed voters. A few housekeeping details before we begin. The forum this evening is a webinar, which means that the audience members can submit questions to the hosts in the chat but cannot pose questions verbally or enable their video. During the forum, candidates will respond to questions, but this is not a debate and time will not be provided for the candidates to rebut each other's responses. Questions will not be specific to any one candidate. Civility is expected, and candidates who behave disrespectfully, such as talking over other candidates, will be warned and may be muted or removed from the forum. Please note that no unauthorized recordings of this forum are permitted as the content of, is the property of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and Randalls Town NAACP, and it may not be used without permission. A recording will be available after the forum and the League's YouTube site and the League's website. And with that, we are ready to begin our forum. Diane Ashenbrenner will be our timekeeper this evening, and our question facilitator will be both Diana and myself. And our moderator tonight is Nielsen Andrews, elected director of the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County. Now, just give me a moment to spotlight our candidates and moderator. Just a second, and then we'll begin.
The Baltimore County Council is the elected legislative body, and it is invested with all the lawmaking power granted by the county charter and by the General Assembly of Maryland. Tonight, we will hear from the Republican candidates for county council in District 5, Philip DiPaola and David Marks. The candidates will each make a two-minute opening statement as well as a two-minute closing statement after the question and answer period. The order of the opening statements was determined by alphabetical order of their last names. The closing statement will be in reverse order from the opening statement. The timekeeper will give a 30-second verbal warning and announce when the allotted time is up. After the opening statements, each of the candidates will have an opportunity to respond to the questions. Candidates will not be allowed to give rebuttals. We will begin with questions developed by the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town NAACP, followed by questions from the audience. Candidates, we invite you to submit questions to the chat where they will be collected, embedded, and passed to the moderator. Questions sent to the forum email before the forum have been collected and will not be monitored during the forum. Our screener will receive questions for repetition and choose for variety. We may not have time to address all questions submitted by the audience. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the questions, and time limits will be strictly enforced. A timekeeper will alert the speaker when they have 30 seconds left and when time is up, at which time the speaker must stop speaking within 10 seconds. Our goal is to end the forum at eight and appreciate everyone's help in achieving this goal. We will now have a two-minute opening statement from each of the candidate. Mr. DiPaola, you will go first. And you can start now.
Great. Well, thank you to all of you for hosting us here tonight. I do appreciate it. My name is Philip DiPaolo. I am a new candidate running in the Baltimore County District 5. I am a small business owner in the Middle River area with a background in the marine industry as a marine construction company, as well as a company for marine services called Eastern Watersports. My goal in running for Baltimore County's council in District 5 was to play a part in representing my community. As a small business owner in our community, I have done a lot to help promote the area, promote our services, try to do a lot of give back, and I've had some interactions with Baltimore County directly in that process. And felt through both our own interactions and just hearing from our neighbors and other people that I work with, that there's probably a few things that could be altered or at least worked on in the county. And I thought that I might be able to move into that position and work to help change some of those things, or at least improve some of those processes. And so that is why I decided to throw my hat in the ring, so to say, and step up and run for Baltimore County Council here in District 5. Thank you.
Mr. Marks?
Thank you very much. Good evening, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for organizing tonight's forum. Mr. DiPaolo, thank you for your attendance. By way of background, I'm a special education teacher, father of two, and lifelong resident of this district. Across the United States, our political institutions are broken. Elected officials engage in constant partisanship. Nothing ever seems to get done. There's a fundamental mistrust between citizens and their leaders. During my time on the county council, I've held firm to important values. I've consistently opposed tax rate increases. I've worked to cut more waste from the county budget than any other council member, and I've called for the creation of an inspector general early on to help eliminate fraud and corruption in Baltimore County. I've said no to bad development and passed legislation that has helped preserve more than 4,000 acres of land. But at the same time, I've built bridges to get things done. We've advanced three new schools, 11 new parks, and resurfaced dozens of miles of road. I was the president of the largest community organization in northeastern Baltimore County for nearly a decade. That experience provided me with a can-do philosophy that is fundamental to serving as councilman. Republican voters, like all residents of Baltimore County, want leaders who hold firm to their principles but also get things done. I'm proud to have been endorsed by a diverse group that includes the Veteran Order of Police and the Sierra Club. To my fellow Republicans, I believe I'm the strongest candidate in this race. I offer independence, strong and stable leadership, and a record of working with all residents, Democrats, Republicans, and independents alike, to get things done. Thank you very much.
We will now go to the questions, and Mr. Marks, you will answer it first. What are your skills and experience preparing for the duties of the county council?
Well, thank you very much. That's an excellent question. First, I was a community leader for many years before I ever ran for office. I was the president of the Perry Hall Improvement Association for nearly a decade, and that gave me a lot of experience, not only in dealing with Baltimore County government, but other community organizations. It taught me some collaborative skills, consensus building, and it gave me experience that has been really helpful in the Baltimore County Council. I've also had a varied experience in the professional sector. As I said, I'm a special educator. I'm the only teacher on the Baltimore County Council. I'm a BCPAS parent, but I've also served in the federal, state, and local governments, including service as Chief of Staff at the Maryland Department of Transportation. So I think I bring that breadth of experience to this position. I've been a collaborative council member who's gotten things done, but I've also held firm to certain established principles.
Mr. DiPaola?
Yes, thank you. So I do not have any political experience. This would be my first time entering into a government position as a council member, and so I certainly can't speak directly to that. However, as a small business owner, I think I position myself in a situation or two to deal with our government, both locally and at the state level. Our company works with both the state governments and the local governments, and so through those interactions alone, it has been my experience as a small business owner that there is a lot of opportunity to improve both relationships with business as well as relationships with those in the neighboring areas that may work directly with the county, maybe in parks, certainly in parks and wrecks, because we had some experience there as well. And so I believe I can bring to the position an opportunity to really have a, I guess, a grasp on what our residents are actually feeling with an unbiased view that doesn't come from being in a position in previous years. And so I think it's sort of a fresh approach. People also know me for definitely speaking my mind, as well as bringing transparency to the things that are going on around me, and that is something that I think really needs to be done. Mr. Marks had mentioned the Office of the Inspector General. I believe that is a very important office, and I believe there is some support that needs to be provided there to continue to make sure that office can operate correctly and, of course, make sure the government is doing the right thing at the right time. And I think my background, being a business owner and sort of speaking his mind, would have a great opportunity to put those things forward and show what's happening in our county council and bring that to our citizens of Baltimore County.
All right. Mr. DiPaolo, you'll answer this next question first. What are your priorities for the Baltimore County budget? Given that the county will receive increased funding from local, state, and federal sources, what would be your spending priorities? And are there particular areas in county that you see as a priority for these funds?
Certainly, thank you. I think number one, our public safety division, both police and fire, making sure that they are fully funded and are able to do their jobs and feel comfortable and safe doing so. And so I think that means a lot of different things as far as funding when it comes to our public safety personnel, so that they feel comfortable, able to actually do their job without anyone maybe questioning them or providing too much oversight that lets them second-guess what they have to do. And so I think there are opportunities to both provide more than just the normal funding you would expect, but also maybe opportunities to educate and provide some education to those who would deal with those public safety personnel and kind of establish better relationships. And I'm sure there is some funds necessary to kind of bridge those gaps so that our community feels comfortable with our public safety personnel. So I believe that's one of the highest areas that we have to make sure it's completely funded. Next, certainly, education takes up a large amount of our budget. I had an opportunity to speak with the Board of Education Chair and kind of hear a little bit about that background. Again, because I'm not currently involved in politics, I don't necessarily know the inner workings, but I'm working hard to learn about them. And there certainly seems to be some opportunities to spend some money additionally in our public school system. My mother was an educator for the last 30 years in Baltimore County, and she certainly has advised me of a number of things where we can, you know, improve and also trim. And so I think my primary focus would be on public safety, on education, and probably finally on some infrastructure projects.
Mr. Marks?
Thank you very much, and another excellent question. The most fundamental responsibility of local government is public safety. And right now, Baltimore County is experiencing significant shortages in its police, the number of police officers. We typically range between 100 and 150 positions that are vacant at any one time. We have a large group of police officers hired in the 1990s who will be retiring this summer, so we have to do a better job of retaining and attracting new police officers. And we can do that in several ways. First, police will tell you that their healthcare expenses are much higher than in other jurisdictions. Second, we can expand the take-home car program. The county executive put money in the budget for a pilot program. I'd like to see that expanded. And third, we can certainly improve our training. In terms of other parts of public safety, we absolutely have to move forward on advancing new fire stations, new volunteer fire stations in the Middle River and Bolleys Quarters areas. I was able to help work with other elected officials and volunteer fire companies in Kingsville and White Marsh to get new facilities, and I want to do the same in Middle River and Bolleys Quarters. Secondly, schools are absolutely a priority. The school budget is about $2.43 billion. We need to do more to accelerate school construction. We've been able to build three new schools in the Northeast. I want to get moving on a new high school, but I also want to tackle teacher hiring, transportation, and special education. Again, a lot of money.
30 seconds.
We need to do a better job at looking at efficiencies there. And then finally, parks. We've been able to advance 11 new parks in my district. I would like to see more parks, particularly in the Bolleys Quarters and Middle River areas, where I don't think there's been enough of an emphasis on open space. Thank you.
All right. On the third question, Mr. Marks, you will go first. What do you see as the major educational issues in the county? How will you use your budgetary influence on the county budget to address these issues?
Absolutely. Great question. First, as I said before, we have to look at efficiencies in the county budget. Throughout Baltimore County, there seems to be a disconnect between parents and the educational bureaucracy at Greenwood. And the county council has been very strong in pushing for reforms and efficiencies. You probably saw the news about what we're trying to do to help with transportation. That's been an ongoing problem, but we have to implement the recommendations of the Efficiency Audit Work Group. There's 197 recommendations that can help streamline the school bureaucracy. Also, looking forward, again, we need to accelerate our school construction program. We need to plan for a new high school on the east side. We need to recruit more police, I'm sorry, more teachers. If you talk to the Teachers Association of Baltimore County, there is a real lack of morale among many educators, and we need to work on hiring more educators. And again, we need to deal with those programs that really affect vulnerable students, such as special education. So again, I think there's some areas where you need to increase resources. The county council is a bully pulpit for doing that, but I also want to see greater efficiencies, and I want to see those 197 recommendations made by the Efficiency Audit Work Group become a reality.
Mr. DiPaola?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Marks mentioned the efficiency audit, and it was one of the first things my mother shared with me regarding education. She said the Board of Public Works spent millions of dollars to do an audit, came up with a number of recommendations, and few, if any, have been put into practice. To me, that's a shame that we invested so much money in an organization and a work group to determine some ways we can improve, some of which are pretty big dollar items, even just with the home office itself. And I would really want to see why we didn't move forward with working and starting to improve on those recommendations, but we felt comfortable hiring them to do so or putting that work group together to do so and spend the money on it. So certainly, that would be a priority of mine, is to dig into that and start to hold some people accountable for those recommendations and making sure that we can look forward to them. It's a pretty big document, but certainly that would be one of my primary focuses. Next, residency audits. I understand there's overcrowding in schools, and I think the term residency audit, you know, brings up a lot of bad blood, if that's the right word, but it seems that we need to be aware of our overcrowding and make sure that the right people are in the right schools. That also leads to some of our school violence issues. And so making sure our SRO program is strong, is also a part of that public safety, fully funded concept, but maybe we need to do more when it comes to the SRO program. And so that is certainly, I think, really important right now. Parents want to know their kids are safe in school, which also brings me to our final thing, which is transportation. We have transportation issues in Baltimore County with kids sitting on the doorstep, waiting for buses to pick them up. I think we need to look into that as well.
All right. The next question, Mr. DiPaolo, you will go first. What would you, what would be your plan to address violence and crime in the county?
Great. I think if anyone could answer that question correctly, they'd probably be in a better position. So certainly, you know, I always think of that question a little bit loaded in the fact that no one's going to come up with a solution to curb the problem. I think I mentioned earlier that providing some outreach to our community to improve relationships with, specifically, law enforcement with the community is going to be a good start at bringing people more awareness about what those officers do, how they can build relationships with them, and maybe help curb some of those issues. And that even begins with that SRO program I mentioned earlier, you know, where students can start to see police officers as friends and as allies, and I think that starts younger. And so making sure that we can provide those opportunities to students and youth is going to have, you know, exponential reward later down the line. And so when it comes to the violence, you know, it's been increasing. You know, our murder rate has increased. It's gotten worse every year. And so, again, just making sure that we have the funds appropriately placed to make sure we can monitor, put more officers on the street, patrol more areas, to just have a larger presence so that it acts as a deterrent to some crime. I think, you know, the answer as to how we solve it is going to go on for a while, but I think there are definitely steps we can take to improve the appearance of how we combat violence and crime in our county, for sure.
Mr. Marks?
Thank you. As I said before, public safety is the top responsibility of local government, and it is certainly my top priority as council member. First, we do need to address the root causes of crime. There are some areas where we can help alleviate poverty. We can improve job training. We can increase access by transportation so that people can get to jobs. So I certainly think that's an area where we can have some resources allocated, but I think the most fundamental thing Baltimore County can do is have a tough-on-crime approach. If you compare Baltimore County to Baltimore City, we have done a much better job in reducing our homicide rate. Our homicide rate last year was around 55 deaths. It's significantly lower this year, and I think it's because we have a state's attorney who is tough on crime, and we have a culture of public safety here that is much more stronger than in other jurisdictions. I certainly agree with Mr. DiPaolo about the School Resource Officers Program. I was at Perry Hall High School in 2012 on the first day of school when there was a shooting. I definitely value the School Resource Officer Program and have worked successfully to expand the SRO initiative. We need to have a more robust citizen patrol program. I've helped create a COP program in places like Seven Courts. And as I said earlier, we need to improve the way that we retain and attract new police officers. Police officers tell me that the healthcare costs are a major deterrent in them coming to Baltimore County. We need to expand the take-home car initiative. And again, we simply need to value police officers. I value our law enforcement community. I'm happy to have been endorsed by the Veteran Order of Police. I regard our police officers as partners. I will always work with them.
All right. Mr. Marks, you will go first this time. How will you work to support transparency and community trust in managing the Police Accountability Board? What guidelines would you use to select the members of the Police Accountability Board?
Absolutely. The county council just looked at this initiative. Each jurisdiction is required to create a Police Accountability Board, and we did follow the state standards, and I think that is going to be an important mechanism as we work to create a culture where both communities and law enforcement work together to make Baltimore County safer. I certainly believe in having diverse viewpoints. One, the Police County Board. That's why I supported an amendment that allows for greater diversity on the Police County Board. I also supported an amendment to the recent legislation that requires any members to the Police County Board to actually attend training sessions, to go along and ride along the programs, so that those board members know exactly what our law enforcement officials have to do every day. So I think those type of things can help as we implement the Police Accountability Board. If we need to take additional steps, I look forward to working with our law enforcement community and our neighborhood associations to make sure that the program is implemented well.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Yeah, so I can honestly say this is not an area that I'm too familiar with as far as it's been recently introduced. I am aware that as a Maryland act, it's required that the county has provided Police Accountability Board. I think one of the parts of that that I'm aware of is the civilian members that function and play a role in that. And I think it's important that by including and tapping into our communities and asking them to be involved in the process of ensuring our police officers are doing the right things at the right times, we can continue to kind of build those relationships and improve that view or that perception of how the police interact with us. And so at the same time, I think that's an important role for actually making sure that our police officers are held accountable and they are still feeling they are able to do the job that they are entrusted with. I can tell you, I do not want a police officer who's going to second-guess what they are supposed to do due to any type of social or community pressures. And I think that, again, by making sure that civilian aspect of that process is strong and a really good part of that board, and I think that will also help improve that situation. Aside from that, you know, I would just refer to our additional police officers and their resources and look at what other jurisdictions, what other state recommends, as he had mentioned. Certainly, I would rely on those items as well, but I can't speak too much more on it.
All right. Mr. DiPaolo, you will go first. Is that right? Mr. Marks, you're going to go first. How would you, how could the county increase availability of affordable housing for county residents?
Baltimore County has an agreement that was implemented under the Cabinet's administration to build 1,000 new affordable and accessible housing units by 2027. The county council was not involved approving this agreement, and candidly, in many ways, it's a flawed document. For example, the Dunfield neighborhood in my district was targeted for affordable housing with no plan for community supports like recreation or public safety. Also, in my opinion, the voluntary compliance agreement, it takes an extraordinarily simplistic view as to where new units should be constructed. And I give you as an example the Red Maple Place Project, where it seems like there was an ignorance of the negative impact of this building in one of Towson's most historic communities. I will not support oversaturating areas like Seven Courts and Middle River with more rentals and more affordable housing. There may be opportunities in places like downtown Towson, where there's broader community support, where there's access to transit and higher education, and I'm also going to continue to support homeownership and initiatives that encourage owner-occupied housing.
Mr. DiPaolo?
Yeah, so, you know, when it comes to affordable housing initiatives, I think it's important that we find a way to get back from those people that we are helping provide to. And so when I think about that, you know, again, not having the experience of being on the council and being a part of this legislation or program in this case, you know, one of the things I think about is how can we get something back from our communities who we are providing those opportunities to? And so I think of programs like, you know, for teachers, for public safety personnel. Is there an opportunity to provide, you know, first homes, affordable housing for those who may not otherwise be able to afford it but are entering into service-based careers or paths? And is there an opportunity there to go ahead and help them out on the housing side and also getting something back in return, you know, so that it isn't a two-way street? So we really do have a interaction, if you will, so it's not just one way. And so making sure that that's available, I think spreading out that opportunity among different areas helps spread those service-based personnel who are probably helping their own neighbors, helping their own communities, because that's sort of the background of that type of person. You know, if you're a law enforcement officer, if you're a firefighter, if you're an educator, my guess is you're probably helping your own community as well. And so I'd like to see some aspect of that when it comes to affordable housing programs. And certainly, I wouldn't want to find it being specified or targeted to high-density areas where only this type of housing exists. I would like to see that spread out.
All right. Mr. DiPaolo, you're going to go first, and I apologize. I think I mixed the order up there on the last.
That's okay.
About that. In Baltimore County, a number of communities currently face food deserts, as well as thousands of residents who face insecurity. How will you work to resolve this situation?
I apologize. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Sure. In Baltimore County, a number of communities currently face food deserts, as well as thousands of residents who face food insecurity. How will you work to resolve this situation?
Again, I would say this is an area that I don't have much expertise in. Um, and so I'm not sure that I have much of a response for this, except to say, certainly if I'm understanding it correctly, um, and you're saying that people have hard time getting access to food, um, certainly I know that it would seem as if our stopgap, uh, became the education system for our youth, where when COVID closed schools, then we found out that our youth somehow didn't have food. But that shouldn't have been the situation, meaning our schools shouldn't be the ones responsible for providing meals to our youth, and I imagine others as well. And so I would think that there would be an opportunity here to really discover the underlying cause of some of these issues when it comes to food insecurity, uh, or not being able to access it as easily and readily, um, and not place that burden on our education system, but rather reach out to our other services of Baltimore County and find out what are the appropriate organizations and departments that should be handling hunger and providing nutrition to our people. Again, education is made to educate. And so, you know, that's the experience I can, you know, provide to this a little bit. Again, it's not my area of expertise and I'm not as familiar with it, but that would be what I could offer right now.
Mr. Marx?
Thank you. It's an excellent question. Um, and here's an alarming statistic. Uh, since, uh, the, the start of the pandemic, 2020, uh, the number of, of BCPS students has grown by about 10, 10%. Um, over half of the students in our system, um, are, are calculated as living in severe poverty. So clearly this is an area where both BCPS and Baltimore County government need to do their best, um, to eliminate poverty and increase, increase the availability of, of food for all those who need them. Um, I've supported, uh, the SNAP program, um, and, um, in the Baltimore County budget. I've also been a strong champion of, um, some nonprofit organizations such as the Student Support Network, um, and the Assistant Center of Towson Churches. There's an awful lot of good work being done at the nonprofit and community level, and that can help supplement, uh, the efforts that are underway in Baltimore County. I do want to also talk about, um, the food desert concept in a larger sense. Um, you know, we have areas of this district where, uh, people just do not have easy access to supermarkets. The Middle River area, for example, um, I'm consistently hearing from people that they have to drive great distances to go to a supermarket. And so I'd like to do what I can as a council member to make sure that places along Maryland 43, Greenlee, other communities, um, have access to a supermarket more readily in their
All right. Uh, Mr. Marx, you will go first again. And the question is, what is your opinion on the, on expanding the number of county council districts?
That is an excellent question. Um, and, uh, I've been asked about this for many years. Um, so the current effort that's underway is to expand the council by four more seats. Um, look, I'm, I'm open to increasing the size of the county council, um, or rather I'm open to, um, the voters of Baltimore County being allowed to decide that in a referendum, but I will not support an addition of four more seats. Uh, that is a large expansion of the county council. Um, I do think a more realistic proposal, uh, is to ask the voters to approve, um, a addition of two seats. Um, it's a much less costier plan, and it would still shrink the number of residents represented by each council member. Again, we're simply asking the voters to decide whether this is something they want to do, because it requires a change to the county council charter, to the county charter. Um, one thing I do want to mention is that whenever you have a charter change, you really need to have broad bipartisan support. Um, and what I see in the current effort to add four seats, I don't see very much buy-in from the Republican Party. Um, many of those who are involved in this effort, um, are, are active in politics on the other side of the aisle. Um, and if you look at, you know, their, their launch of this campaign, the Republicans were not even included. Anytime you change the charter of Baltimore County, you have to have buy-in from Democrats, Republicans, and independents alike. So the answer to your question is, I oppose, uh, and I will not support, um, adding four seats. I am open to increasing the size of the council by two seats, rather asking the voters of Baltimore County to approve that, uh, in a referendum.
Mr. DePaulo?
Yes, thank you. Um, I will also start off by saying I would, too, oppose the idea of adding additional seats. Um, and similar to my opening introduction about transparency and my goal to make sure that we provide what's happening inside the county government to those that are actually affected by the county government, i.e. the citizens, um, making it their decision, making it their choice, having them decide if that's the right thing to do, is of course what I would support. Now, when it comes to the fact that our county has grown in size, certainly there are a larger number of people being represented than were before, I, too, would be more open to, you know, adding the two additional seats. Obviously you can't add a even number here, so certainly two, uh, would, uh, be something that could be considered. And I think one thing that's really important, and the reason I suggest that is, while density, I think is necessary as far as the population, really if you look at the geographical area that a district might represent, regardless of the density, sometimes it's just difficult to be, even the district that we're running in goes on the whole side of the, the east side of Baltimore County, basically our district. And that's a large area to be able to cover and really be able to get to everyone at that same time. I mean, we can say we can do that, but it's a large area to expand one person to really represent, even if there are only two people there. You know, you still have to travel from one full side to the other. And so the idea of having a few more seats, a couple more seats, I think would be appropriate if we were really taking a look at the size of the area they were representing, because I think that also plays an important factor.
All right, Mr. DePaulo, you will go first. How is climate change impacting the county and what can the council do to address the effects?
And you said, how is time and change affecting the county, correct?
Yes. How is climate change impacting the county? What can the council do to address the effects?
I mean, I, I think this is one of the more generic questions as far as climate change in general is affecting everyone. And I certainly think that people are on the train to knowing that we need to do a few things to help reduce some of those items that we shouldn't be using. So more and more people are using cleaner energies, more and more we're moving towards, whether it's electric vehicles or clean energy fuel vehicles. I think those are things that have already started to happen, but it's a hard thing to change all at once. And so honestly, it does seem like the county is promoting, uh, and working towards providing opportunities to small businesses, development that are going to be LEED certified, um, and really making sure that there are, you know, incentives to following those items. But honestly, I, I think as a human race, we are all on that train. We are all trying to do things to help improve climate change in general. And so I think if we just continue to do that, then similarly governments and others will follow along. And so I would definitely be a proponent of making sure that we are moving in that direction. Um, I certainly would not be in favor of doing anything to move in the opposite direction, um, but offering incentives to, again, small businesses or developers that, that make a commitment to having those green energy, um, based, you know, give backs or investing in those types of areas, um, is something that
Thirty seconds.
I'm supporting for sure. Um, I think there was actually a youth group that put together a whole climate change, um, a proposal about some things the county could do as well. And I think they were probably smarter than all of us, so that would be something to take a look at.
Mr. Marx?
Well, again, an excellent question and one that is particularly germane to the New Fifth District. Uh, the New Fifth District includes much of Baltimore County's waterfront and includes Harwood Park, Oliver Beach, Bolles Quarters, uh, a few other areas in Baltimore County that will be as impacted by the rise in water that's caused by climate change. Um, you know, I, I consider myself a pro-environment Republican. Uh, I was recently endorsed by the Sierra Club, which is one of the largest and oldest conservation organizations in the United States. Um, I have a record of advancing new parks, protecting thousands of acres from development, supporting tree planting, and preserving our waterways. But specifically with regard to climate, um, as a council member, I supported the development of a Baltimore County Climate Action Plan. And that looks at increasing the amount of renewable energy. It also looks at improving the resiliency of properties that are along water lines. And that's what I would really do. I would embrace reasonable efforts to make our homes and more businesses more resilient against rising water. Um, the other interesting perspective I provide is that I'm Baltimore County's representative on the Critical Areas Commission. I've served on the Critical Areas Commission since 2015, and that has given me an understanding of the importance of property setbacks and respecting sensitive areas along the Chesapeake Bay. So, uh, to summarize, um, I'm going to, uh, trust and respect the recommendations of the Climate Action Plan. I'm going to do all I can to improve, uh, the use of renewable energy, to plant more trees, to preserve open space, and to be respectful
Thirty seconds.
and to be respectful of our waterways, which are so critically important in the New Fifth District.
All right, Mr. Marx, you will go first. What proposals would you offer to improve services for older adult residents?
More than 25% of Baltimore County's population is senior citizen. And I think you have to look at this issue holistically. Um, it's not just increasing access, uh, to, um, uh, you know, recreational centers or to grocery stores or other destinations, but it's also providing housing, uh, where senior citizens can live. That has been a big priority for me as a council member. Um, I've worked with the Perry Hall Improvement Association, for example, uh, to develop a senior restricted community at the Gerst Farm, uh, a community that where, where 40% of the land is preserved as open space, where it's accessible to the Honey Go Village Center. And I think that type of, of community can be a model elsewhere in Baltimore County. Um, I mentioned before my background in transportation. Um, I worked in the state and federal Department of Transportation. Uh, so I have a, a good perspective on increasing mobility among Cedar citizens. I championed the Towson Loop for over a decade. Um, I think we could certainly look at replicating, uh, those type of nimble transit services in other areas, such as the White Marsh Town Center. Um, and I think, again, uh, my, my record and my experience shows, uh, that this is something that I will make a priority as we continue to meet the demands of a growing senior population.
All right, Mr. Marx, you will go first. How will you work to increase the availability of jobs with a living wage?
Nielsen, I think you skipped Mr. DePaulo.
Yes.
Is it Mr. DePaulo first? Sorry.
You, you skipped him on that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. That's okay.
I'm too far ahead.
That's all right. That's all right. So certainly, um, a- as Mr. Marx mentioned, you know, we do have a large senior citizen population here in Baltimore County. Um, and I think the goal, if we want to try to maintain that senior citizen population, that means not leaving the state of Maryland, not leaving Baltimore County, uh, efforts to work with both state legislation, um, similarly with the, the new passing of the Retirement Act that allows a bit more of your retirement income, you tax a little bit less, uh, here in Maryland now, um, those kinds of initiatives to help preserve people here so that we can then provide other opportunities, as mentioned before, to those senior citizens, such as accessibility to areas like food services, uh, to, uh, social activity, to, to being involved, to going out and, and going to the malls, to feel safe and comfortable doing so. Um, and if unable to do so, helping to provide services that would bring those things to our senior citizens, whether it's through county services or even through contracted services to assist with that process. So they would feel that even if they can't go to the places, that we can help bring them to them, and that they have the resources to find out how to do that. Um, I think it's really important that they feel connected, uh, and a part of the community. So, you know, even having, you know,
Thirty seconds.
reaching out to our own public safety, again, that kind of keep coming back to this idea of improving the relationship, improving the perception, but having, you know, even law enforcement officers being out and doing daily checkups, you know, if they're not on an active call, you know, working with those senior citizen areas, uh, and checking in and just saying, hey, how are you today? I think there are a lot of opportunities here.
And actually, Mr. DePaulo, you will go first. How will you work to increase the availability of jobs with a living wage in the county?
Yeah, so I, I think there's a few things here. So we talked about increasing the availability of jobs with a living wage. One, I think that there is a perception that certain entry-level jobs are jobs for a living wage, and I don't think that's correct. And so, one, I think redirecting some of the perception about entry-level positions is an important thing to, to support and to stand behind. You know, I don't want someone to believe that their first job, working at a fast food restaurant, needs to be the job that supports a living wage for that person. I don't think that's the right case. However, I do think with our large, large vendors that are coming into Maryland and certainly into Baltimore County, such as Trade Point Atlantic, that there are opportunities there to move students possibly into programs that help them find careers with these organizations. To see Amazon come into our public school system and work with a program to take a student who may not decide they want to go to college, but could find a just as great career, entering into Amazon and, and following their pathway of, of paying for education, uh, paying for programs to help them advance. I think that would be an excellent opportunity for us to reach out to those types of large organizations, you know, FedEx and others that are coming to the areas of Baltimore County, um, and of course getting some incentives to do so. I think they need to work with us to help increase
Thirty seconds.
some of those opportunities to create careers that are outside of the alternative, the normal path. So trade school programs that help people set up for careers, you know, the plumber I paid the other day, he did a hell of a job, and that's a heck of a career. Um, and we need to make sure that our students have those opportunities to head into those positions.
Mr. Marx?
Thank you. Uh, first of all, uh, I have tremendous faith in Baltimore County's entrepreneurs, and they certainly struggled during the shutdown. Um, they were resilient, and we are proud of all of our entrepreneurs, uh, for what they do. I think there's three, uh, three definite, uh, goals that we have here. First, uh, diversification, second, partnerships, and third, education. Uh, in terms of diversification, we need to continue to diversify the county's economy. Um, in 2014, uh, what is now Trade Point Atlantic, uh, was basically barren, and the county council made the wise decision to invest in the infrastructure that has allowed Trade Point Atlantic to be one of the most cutting-edge areas along the mid-Atlantic coast. Um, we were perfectly positioned when COVID-19 struck, and there was an incredible rush for, um, remote retailing. Uh, so diversifying our economy is certainly a priority. Second is developing partnerships. Um, and I think you do that, um, by working with your chambers of commerce and other entities and with the state government. And then thirdly, education. Um, I have been one of the strongest proponents of a new high school on the east side. Um, a high school that, uh, is perhaps half neighborhood-focused, but half, uh, the trades-focused. Uh, and here's an area where I think Mr. DePaulo and I are, are aligned, uh, that we have got to do a much better job of encouraging
Thirty seconds.
people, encouraging students to go into the trades. Why not have a high school in eastern Baltimore County that works with the marine trades industry? Uh, that should be a goal. So again, I think it's three things we can do: diversifying the local economy, developing partnerships, and improving education.
All right, Mr. Marx, you will go first. Miss, what proposals would you offer to improve services for older adult residents?
Did we do that? Yes, yes, we did that one.
How, all right, how would you help the homeless population in Baltimore County?
Uh, excellent question, and it, um, it aligns with what I mentioned earlier about the increase in child poverty, poverty among students. Um, first, uh, addressing the root causes of poverty, um, and making sure that we are, we are servicing the homeless population, we're providing facilities in the right parts of Baltimore County. Uh, right now, we have shelters in limited areas, the east side and the west side. Now, we've done a really good job, I think, of developing a comprehensive shelter, um, over, uh, near Franklin near Franklin Square Medical Center, but we still are lacking an area in the central Baltimore County region where we can accommodate those families who don't have a place to live. But I think the larger issue is job training, is encouraging and expanding economy, and making sure that we are doing our very best to help those homeless individuals who want jobs. I've experienced many times in Perry Hall and other communities where we try to help homeless individuals, and they're reluctant to have those supports. We've engaged groups like Prolog, we've engaged folks who are very experienced in mental illness, and that's had some successes. But sometimes, these issues are very complex. They require a lot of patience. I think what the county can do, though, is provide the supports that will help us reduce and hopefully eliminate the homeless problem.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes. You know, I think one of the things I had heard, I had been involved in the fire service for quite some time as a volunteer, and, you know, we ran into a lot of people who were in this situation. You know, a lot of our homeless population do honestly know where they need to go when it gets really bad. And I think being able to provide a reason for them to want to get there and being able to provide them some resources that, once they're there, they may be able to help improve their own situation. And when I say resources, really behavioral health resources. I think the opportunity to provide someone with shelter is just a Band-Aid to the actual problem. The problem is that we need to find out why they're out there. And for a lot of them, it may not be related to the amount of money they have or their ability to make that money to be able to provide for themselves, but that they feel like they can't do it. And that we could provide, again, resources, counseling, and give them an opportunity to maybe figure out how they can do it and feel comfortable doing so. You know, nothing's going to be better than that person taking their own action and improving their situation. And it could be as simple as, you know, listening to their story, you know, and showing them an opportunity that might exist that they didn't even realize existed right now, because they are just overwhelmed with what they are going through to be able to take that next step. So really addressing the behavioral health system and finding out that underlying cause to provide a better situation for them later on.
Mr. DePaul, you will go first. What steps would you propose to increase tourism in Baltimore County?
Now, this is a question I'm probably geared to answer. So Eastern Water Sports, my business, sits on the Maryland Marketing Partnership. And the whole goal of the Maryland Marketing Partnership is to help bring both business to Maryland, and for us specifically, our goal is to bring tourism business to Maryland. And so, you know, this is definitely my bread and butter. When it comes to bringing tourism to Baltimore County, you know, we have five different locations where we provide services ourselves, but being able to bring people to something they can't experience elsewhere, I think is really important. We have amazing waterfront along Baltimore County that other landlocked counties do not have the opportunity to visit. And I think that's one of our biggest features we can offer. So again, you know, District Five is certainly a lot of waterfront area, and I think there's an opportunity here specifically to really generate traffic to our water-based restaurants, our water-based services, I'm not the only one that does water sports, and other opportunities in both parks that are, whether they're state parks or Baltimore County parks. Baltimore County has beautiful parks along the water where they offer swimming and other activities, and those are opportunities for us to bring in residents from other counties to come and enjoy those activities.
Thirty seconds.
As they're leaving, supporting and patronizing the restaurants in the area, going to a movie theater in the area, and supporting other local businesses that might be on their way home. And so really drawing that attention here is certainly something that I am definitely looking forward to working on.
Mr. Marks?
As I travel throughout the fifth district, I am stunned at the beauty of this region. The fifth district, including and other areas throughout Baltimore County, is just alive with the gorgeous places where not only can people eventually locate, but they can also enjoy what the county has to offer. You know, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. There was a study done about three years ago by the county's Department of Economic and Workforce Development that looked at the county's tourism landscape, and they recommended a series of steps that could help the county generate, I think it was $7 billion of tourism-related spending over a 10-year period. We simply have not done a good enough job of looking at the impact of tourism, whether it's visitations to parks, whether it's enjoyment of, as Mr. DePaula mentioned, Baltimore County's beautiful waterfront, and so on. I mean, I think there's another area where we can do a much better job, and that is in recreation and parks usage. Baltimore County is simply not holding the type of sporting tournaments that you see in other counties, such as Howard County. And I'm hoping that as we continue to expand our park system, and that's an area that's been a definite priority for me, we can look at opportunities to bring new tourism and tourist-related money into our local economy.
All right. Mr. Marks, you'll go first on the next question. There has already been one major recent ransomware attack on a county department. How do you propose preventing future attacks, and how would you help protect residents' confidential information from a ransomware attack on a county department?
I'm not an expert in information technology, but I will tell you, when the ransomware attack occurred, the county council felt like we were not getting the necessary information from the school system. And we pushed the superintendent numerous times, even as he was dealing with that incident. So I would certainly like to see a greater information sharing when those type of incidents occur. And I would respect our IT professionals as they work to harden our networks throughout Baltimore County.
Mr. DePaul?
Certainly another area of expertise, so my PhD is actually in IT, specifically in healthcare IT, in which I do some consulting work. And so certainly, I do have a level of experience when it comes to both cybersecurity and information technology in general. But the truth is, what Mr. Marks said, communication. If a department is not going to communicate about the initial phases when they discover these items and reach out to additional resources, then we're going to fail right there. You can't solve it yourself. You need the resources of the government that's involved in the process to assist you and move forward. You need to engage with those professionals who are experts in those fields, and they might be in a field that obviously is not related, so, meaning as far as the department it's involved in. You know, maybe the Board of Public Works has its own IT department, but maybe that's not the person you want handling a ransomware attack. And so that communication is certainly key, that initial communication, and certainly that ongoing, almost command center approach to that incident. I mean, just like with the fire department and the police department, setting up an incident command structure for a virtual attack is the same process as one that's physical. And so having those lines of communications in place ahead of time and being proactive about what needs to happen to this affair is super important. We do proactively plan terrorist attacks, bomb threats, et cetera. We need to do the same thing now when it comes to these cybersecurity threats that we're experiencing more and more regularly. And we also need to communicate and be transparent with those who might have been exposed because of it.
All right, Mr. DePaul, you will go first. How would you propose to improve water and sewer services in Baltimore County?
A great question. So I understand that sometimes a lot of those proposals to improve or expand water and sewer is at the bequest of a large developer. And a lot of times, the request itself may not get enough scrutiny. And the, I guess, the downside to that is there are others who might suffer because of it. However, I think the problem becomes sort of twofold in that you're competing against what's going to happen when we improve that system to a certain area that may have not have had the improvement before, meaning that area was probably already underdeveloped. And is that area ready to be able to handle any increased traffic, people, et cetera, that might come through due to increasing the availability of that water and sewer? So I think that's a really important designation when we think about that process. If we're referring certainly to improving existing infrastructure and making sure that our water and sewer is provided correctly to those who already have it, certainly we need to make sure that we're providing clean and healthy water and that we don't have any issues with leakage of sewer into water systems, into the Chesapeake Bay, or find ourselves in a situation like we see in Baltimore City. And so
Thirty seconds.
That areas like the Back River Treatment Center, which are on Baltimore County area, but is currently, I guess, sort of run by Baltimore City and now, of course, the state of Maryland, that we have some oversight or say in those processes so that we are aware what's happening there as well, so we can protect our waters.
All right. Mr. DePaul, you will go first on this.
I think it's David Marks. Mr. Marks?
Oh, David still has to answer. Sorry about that, David.
No problem at all. A couple thoughts on this. First, Baltimore County is under a consent decree from 2005. There was a consent decree that was brought forward by the EPA and by the Maryland Department of the Environment. So Baltimore County has been under this consent agreement, updating a lot of its infrastructure. So those improvements are moving forward. But there are some broader things that we need to consider. The first thing is looking at our overall water agreement. Baltimore County has been secondary to Baltimore City in how we provide water services for about a century. And it is extremely frustrating for me as a council member that I have to depend on Baltimore City when we have routine breakages in our water supply. I think as a council member, you can continue to advocate for upgrades to your water system. I was able to do that in the Seven Courts area, where we got new lines put down, also along the John Opfer Road corridor. But another thing I want to talk about is, as a council member, you have to also anticipate things that happen in other jurisdictions. In 2019, I found out about a plan by a church in Hartford County to discharge into the Little Gunpowder Falls, and I helped lead the coalition to stop that. And that actually resulted in legislation being enacted at the state level that will require greater regional, greater regional notification. So I think it's a number of things. It's first, making sure we're following the consent decree. It's, secondly, making sure that we have these projects underway. And, thirdly, it's making sure that our communities know about projects that may be underway or planned in other jurisdictions.
All right. We have reached the end of the audience questions. It's time for your closing remarks. And Mr. Marks, you go first this time.
Well, thank you very much, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight, Mr. DePaula. I also appreciate you attending as well. For most of Baltimore County's history, we've been governed by one political party. In 2010, I joined the county council as the second Republican council member. Then in 2014, we added a third. As a result, we have a nearly divided county council where the Republicans offer checks and balances and force the county government to often find the middle ground. The Republican members push to cut wasteful programs. We've stood behind our inspector general when she was being attacked. We offer the valuable perspective of the loyal opposition. It is critical that, as Republicans, we field the strongest possible candidate to hold this seat in November against the likely Democratic nominee, a partisan who would erode that checks and balances. Tonight, I've laid out a record of independence that is so essential in government. I've opposed income and property tax increases. I've voted to cut a historic amount of waste. I defended our police and firefighters. I've said no to bad development. I've also built bridges to get things done, advancing 11 new parks, three new schools, and community improvements from Towson to Kingsville. As I campaign in Middle River, residents are desperate for that type of leadership, and that is only possible with someone who has the relationships and experience to get things done. There's a reason why I've been endorsed by organizations as diverse as the police, the firefighters, the AFL-CIO, and the Sierra Club. They know that I'm a principled elected official who holds firm but gets results. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before each night.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes, and thank you again for hosting us. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the NAACP of Randallstown. And again, thank you to David Marks as well. I am excited to enter into this candidacy and position as someone who has not done it before. I am excited to bring what I have experienced as a business owner, both interacting with Baltimore County and its residents, and listening to the neighbors around me, the people I interact with through our water sports services. And we really do reach a large number of people, and having those conversations and hearing what they want to do and what they'd like to see changed and what differences they'd like to see made. You know, we really reach a diverse culture of people, and it's exciting to be able to bring what they want to Baltimore County as a business owner and really hearing them and being on the pulse. And so I am just super excited about the opportunity to be that person. I'm excited about the opportunity to work alongside our other county council members to, as you mentioned, bring some checks and balances as well, to ensure that we really are focusing on everyone, not just one side or the other, but really making sure we can include everyone in our decisions and making sure that we let the citizens of Baltimore County know what those decisions are ahead of time. Being proactive, reaching out, and letting those residents know
Thirty seconds.
What our decisions are going to be made, when they're going to be made, what's big topics that's coming between the council, so that the community can really get involved and provide some input before the process even starts. I jokingly say, you know, if you like what's currently going on, then don't vote for me. But if you want to see something a little bit different, give me a chance. Thank you, guys, again. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, audience members, for your questions and participating in tonight's program. You're our candidates for participating in the forum and serving as an example of civil discourse. You've given Baltimore County residents a great deal to think about as we vote in July. I would like, I would also like to thank our forum committee for arranging this event, and the League of Women Voters, and NAACP of Randallstown for co-sponsoring the forum. In the next few days, recordings of this forum will be available on the League's website and on vote411.org. Primary Elections Day is July 19, 2022. Early voting begins on July 7, and all voting ends on July 19 at 9:00 p.m. Vote411 is Legal Women Voters' Free Online Voters' Guide, your one-stop shopping site for everything about your local ballot, candidate positions, in their own words, polling places, and more. Hard copies of the Legal Women Voters' Guides will be available soon at branches of the Baltimore County Public Library, senior centers, Ed Start centers, and college campuses. We hope that you will consider joining or donating to the League of Women Voters and the Randallstown NAACP to support our work. Thank you. Thanks for coming, and good night.